Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing we're going to do is approve the agenda. There's a couple of things that we need to amend on it. We're going to table item five because there's some things that need to be ironed out on the survey issues. And also, we're going to table number six because Scott hasn't had a chance to review it completely and Maggie found some discrepancies. And so, we will table those two things to our next meeting on the 20th. And as we were just talking, in the consent item, the actual public notice in there, it says, "The meeting will be held on August 6th for the public hearing," but that needs to be changed to August 20th. So, those are the only changes that I'm aware of of the agenda. So, anyone else have any other issues? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, in the opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. First thing, at our last meeting, we approved the appointment of Kay Wilcox to serve out Amy Jurick's term, the rest of her term, which will end January 7th. So, today, we need to officially administer the oath of office for Kay. And Mike will do that, but before we do that, Mike, Kay, again, I would like to thank you very much for stepping up to the plate again. You've served your time before, but helping us out again is greatly appreciated. And the citizens of New Prague really appreciate it.
She gives back 21-plus years of experience. If you want, we'll have her come down front and look into the oath of office.
Kay, they need you up front.
All right, if you'll come on front and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kay Wilcox.
I, Kay Wilcox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America and the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council, mayor, city council member.
City council member.
Of New Prague, Minnesota. According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am.
That I am.
And was at the time of my appointment.
And was at the time of my appointment.
A resident of the city of New Prague.
A resident of the city of New Prague, Minnesota.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Again, Kay, thank you and welcome. Next on the agenda, we have to approve the appointment of Kay to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Mike, basically, we just have to make a motion and...
Yeah, if you approve the resolution, then I can administer the oath of office.
Okay. Well, you get to do that again, Kay. Any questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, appointing Kay to the HRA committee.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. There's no other further comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, in the opposition? Okay. Kay, I guess you have to go through this again.
If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I think you know the girl. I, Kay Wilcox.
I, Kay Wilcox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the commissioner of Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Of New Prague, Minnesota.
Of New Prague, Minnesota.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God. I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am.
That I am.
And was at the time of my appointment.
And was at the time of my appointment.
A resident of the city of New Prague, Minnesota.
A resident of the city of New Prague, Minnesota.
Congratulations here now too.
And the final piece of the puzzle for Kay is, as mayor, I make the appointments to the boards and commissions. And based on Kay taking over Amy's job, I'm going to appoint Kay to the Planning Commission. So, with that, I need a motion to approve that appointment.
Seven.
So, we got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Maggie Bass, to approve the appointment of Kay Wilcox to the Planning Commission. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, in the opposition? Okay. Kay, you're officially done now with all your swearing in things. Kay, next, Jim?
Honorable mayor and city council, tonight, I would ask that you take some time to swear in our new officer for the city of New Prague. Officer Jensen was raised in Springfield, Minnesota. He graduated from Springfield High School. He received a bachelor's arts degree in criminal justice from Miss Davis Dolphins College. Mr. Jensen, or Officer Jensen, completed his law enforcement skills training through Minnesota State University of Mankato. He started with the Wasika County Sheriff's Office as a dispatcher in November of 2003. While working there, he married in 2005, started his family, and was promoted to deputy sheriff in March of 2006, and continued to serve in that capacity to June 10th of 2018, at which time he was appointed here in New Prague as a police officer. Hunter Jensen has continued to develop himself professionally through his experience and training over the last 12 years. Tonight, I would ask that the mayor swear in Officer Jensen as a police officer for the city of New Prague.
Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Hunter Jensen.
Hunter Jensen.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And its laws.
And its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And community to the best of my abilities.
And community to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Hunter, before you go, you want to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Right there is my wife, Kristy. Our youngest, Aki. Eli. Oldest, Jessus. Trey. And my daughter couldn't be here. She had competition dance auditions tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're not going to have the Wasika County Sheriff mad at us or anything, are we?
No.
That's usually just Whatabill, as we keep stealing people from them. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, table five and six. So, number seven, regarding the appointment of Nathan and G. Is Nathan here? No? Okay.
We didn't have schedule here.
No, that's fine. I just...
You're checking the council whether you were going to either choose to interview or you could choose to appoint. There's a summary sheet in front of you, Barbara tried to pull together from some past materials. It'll be on the park board representative. And you see some items highlighted in yellow. The term is still the same. It went from 12 months to one year. The term is really June 1st to the end of May 31st, which coincides with all of the board and commission member terms. Also happens to work for the school year as well. And then, that they serve as a non-voting member on the park board. So, the council has the choice, either to choose to interview or the mayor can nominate him to the park board.
Do we know what, is he going to be a senior, going to be a junior?
Yes, Barbara. I don't know that we have from the application.
Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't tell from the application.
I don't have the answer to that. Probably have to make that modification on the youth applicants.
Was that the meeting we talked about?
Jim thought somebody heard he was going to be a junior.
Okay.
I thought you said that at the meeting.
Oh, I don't know. No. Because they're supposed to serve juniors. Yeah, they have to, they can be a junior.
Okay. Any comments from the council ball?
Well, I think the fact that we haven't had a youth representative for a number of months, it would be nice to have someone representing that age group.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd just clarify his email and phone number. I couldn't read it, so... Then my eyes aren't as good as they used to be either.
It's kind of Dr. Sandberg like you.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, based on Maggie's statement, I agree with her. I think we should probably move ahead rather than, you know, waste any more time, since he's the only person that we've been fortunate enough to want to serve on that. So, based on that, I guess I will make the appointment to, for Nathan, to serve as the youth member of the park board.
Second to your motion.
I need it, no, I get an appointment and I need a motion too.
It should be, you're nominating him to the council, then you need a motion.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Whatever Mike said. Sean, give the motion, second by Dave Brusich. There's any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Mike, if possible, we have a park board meeting tomorrow. And if you could invite Nathan, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Okay, good. Mike, I assume you're handling the next one?
I will. Excuse me, Barbara. The request, encouragement, and recognition of the city attorney's office. His office, city staff, and I have been attempting to develop what he's termed the ballpark use and licensing agreement for the upcoming Minnesota State Under Baseball Tournament that we're going to be hosting over the three weekends, beginning on the weekend of August 17th, August 24th, and then August 31st. And as we talked about it, you had previously, as a council, approved several items of consideration in working with the baseball committee, I believe it was two council meetings ago. But there were really some other elements contained in that, that they were recommending that we deal with. And as you see at the bottom of the first page in the memo, they included a number of the recitals, but the dates for the exclusive use. The compensation for the facilities used is approved by the council. For those that can remember that far back, back in March of 2015, there was an agreement that they were going to provide funds from the hopeful success of the three-week-end tournament. It's being hosted with Shock at Beat. And there will be some funds that will also go to Jordan from all the concessions and the food and the beer sales and the clothing sales, advertising. And so, they've got an arrangement there. And what this does is this attempts to hold both parties, the New Prague Orioles and the New Prague State Baseball, which is a 501(c) form that was created to help oversee parts of that. Field maintenance, the concessions, food and alcohol operations, sales responsibilities at the ballpark, the general liability, the liquor liability insurance requirements, and then compensation for damages should there be any within the use of facilities. It was an agreement that didn't previously used to exist. And with the scope of this being such a large event for us, I thought it was appropriate that we bring all of these terms and conditions together in one agreement. And then, use it ultimately going forward in the future. We don't have to recreate the wheel now that we have this. We can change the names and dates and some of those other elements. But it does give us, from a risk management perspective, an outline of all of the general types of things, unless you have a specific question on a certain item. I did meet with representatives of both of the entities. And so, was able to get this signed late last week for inclusion in the package. So, we're on board and we're understanding what needs to occur, so that everything hopefully works out extremely well. There's no issues, problems, or incidents, or those kinds of things. But tried to put on our risk management hats and cover most of the elements. The only thing that we had in there that's been somewhat difficult to address, as you had previously provided on the operation of golf carts, is that you agreed to waive the application fees, which we had worked with them on. However, they could not get any insurance company to provide coverage for providing the use of golf carts to enable the public to travel back and forth from their hopeful use, which was picking up people out in the streets, out in the various neighborhoods, and trying to bring them back. No insurance company would touch insuring that even as a special event activity or anything. Couldn't get it covered under any of the insurance policies. And so, this was the first event that we've had anybody that really has tried to come in and apply for the use of the golf cart permit as an entity. Individual homeowners can get it because it's covered under their homeowner's policy in that respect. But to enable, to have like a six-person golf cart to go and pick people up in the parking lots throughout the neighborhoods, they could not get insurance for it. So, otherwise, everything else has been generally worked out. Our staff has continued to work both this week and next week in order to be ready for the beginning of the tournament Friday, August 17th.
Just a question, not directly related to this, but the outdoor pool, are we closing that, the 15th, is the last day?
Right, 15th.
15th is the last day, okay.
They'll be using that facility for restroom capabilities as needed. In addition, I think they've got some porta-potties coming in. And then, we've got, obviously, the new restroom facilities inside the ballpark. But it'll take that combination of all those to meet the needs.
Do you know if they're putting like one big tent? Are they having smaller tents?
I've not been involved in that aspect. Glenn has been working closely with them. But I know they've got a multitude of different tents for different things. One will, I believe, shelter and cover most of the food prep area that they have. I think they cook under the fryers just outside of that, if I remember from Green Isle and Hamburg and Northern Young America had a building, Hamburg had a building. But over in Green Isle last year, the tent out in the parking lot, they brought together the food and all that underneath the tent and that. But had picnic tables out in the parking lot and for people to eat. But the cooking, I think, the frying of hamburgers and the meat set fryers, I think, are just outside. I believe, but I think that's what's occurring. Or that they're just under a cancer range or something.
What about the use of the concession stand? Are they going to use that?
They will use that for, I believe, pop and beaterade sales and candies and popcorn and those kinds of things. But most of the food prep, as far as the onion rings, french fries, hamburgers, brats, hot dogs, all those kinds of things, that'll all be done out of the parking lot.
Okay.
Does the $25,000, how did you come up with that figure? Is it a certain percentage of anticipated income?
No, what that was is they took a look at it and there was no guarantee back when we started putting this together that they were using best available information from other state tournaments and what they likely might get. But I think they reasonably believed that it's going to be more. But then, they also have first-time expenses that they're incurring as part of this. And so, it's really unknown, since the city and the baseball community have never been through an event of this size and this magnitude. But they formally committed or agreed to, with whatever the sales were, that at least that amount would come to the city as part of the overall commitment and the donation for undertaking improvements at the baseball facilities. So, it did seem prudent to try to charge them something additional on top of that. I know that should that number exceed that level, is that the intent would be, is that as they get all done and close out, paying all the bills, and they make that payment, that if there's anything remaining that that likely will go into a fund that possibly we might maintain or that they might be able to the city, so that the baseball community can have input on improvements or enhancements at the stadium, that they've got some money there. Or hopefully, to save some of that as seed money, should they get into another turn of this nature, that they have to go out and borrow for a startup line of cash to incur some expenses at the beginning until they can get all settled up.
And is there a set amount of debt that they owe us? Or is this just a gentleman's agreement or what?
It was a gentleman's agreement until this document was put together.
So, this is, there's no top number that we're going forward to consider them paid back or anything?
This contribution is that amount.
Okay.
That was in addition, Kay, and I could have brought that sheet. But the Orioles committed a contribution over seven years. The New Prague baseball committed over seven years. We developed a lease agreement with the New Prague School District over seven years. The city put in funding, utilities put in funding to undertake all these baseball improvements. But this was our way of trying to ensure that what was a gentleman's agreement was captured in relationship to any rental of the public facilities, with the hope and belief that there possibly will be more that comes as part of it, depending on how the whole thing turns out.
Is there rental agreements for other towns to use that facility?
This is the first agreement that we've developed, putting together. I've also worked on developing one, possibly to start next year, that we would have with the New Prague Orioles for just the use of the concessions and that for all of the annual baseball games. They make that concession stand and I think different parent groups, as part of the different entities that use it, they all donate time in that. And so, we think we should come up with something that deals with that during the regular baseball season. But this one was kind of a special agreement that's a much larger event and really can be an outline, should we want to use it or should some other event come to town, you know, whether it's a VFW, a Legion tournament, or high school tournament or something. We don't know, but we at least have the framework of something that can be modified or used going forward in the future.
The city owns the facility, correct?
Correct.
I've got a question on page two, number four, the parking. You have unpaid surface north of Third Street, which I believe is the former armory building. Is that going to include parking on the grass surface there?
Yes.
It will?
It'll be painted Ken, put together a map for Glenn and the baseball committee as to trying to develop an entrance in and out of the facility, which for those who are familiar would be over in the northeast corner of that site.
Basically, Second Street, southeast is like a stub street into the townhomes there.
Entrance in and out would come through there. And then, there's an arrangement so that hopefully there will be smooth in and out the way that it's painted. And they're going to have people directing traffic to do that. We did reserve the right, if we, if we had 10 inches of rain or something, that then had to shut it down, that we have the right to do that if that would become necessary. We also developed in regards to the parking, is that Glenn Schteeg had prepared a notice that was hand-delivered by members of the New Prague Orioles out into the neighborhood. That would be east of Lexington, south of Main Street, and west of 10th Avenue, all the way south. It was delivered to all of the proprietors of that neighborhood, alerting them to the fact that this is coming. Should there be any concerns or issues that would cause ingress or egress in and out of somebody's driveway or something, here's what you could call. And we've talked with the PD to try to be able to make them available to interact with baseball, to try to get ahold of people if they do something like that. So, we can try to resolve that in a very friendly fashion, so to speak. But if they have other concerns or issues, they can notify us. But basically, we're putting them on notice that although the public has the right to park in public, they shouldn't block driveways and do those kinds of things.
And I assume the people that will be directing traffic there are part of the volunteers?
They are.
Okay.
Larry Schenker, I believe, is involved in leading those efforts. I got to meet him last Thursday out at the park. And he's done some extensive parking up that, I believe he said, the Midwack and Sioux. And so, he's familiar with kind of guiding that. So, we're hoping we can do it. I don't know what he's got worked out with Glenn, trying to, we know probably a lot of people jumping the curbs anywhere all the way around, but to try to correct them on the street that Ken described.
I have another question for staff and the council. And should the city have designated a staff member or employee to oversee some of this and let us know that, yes, everything is going to our...
We are, that just so you have some idea, that we wouldn't be involved in the last three and a half years and just walk away for the tournament. But Glenn will be at home in Reach Bowl that first weekend, but he is scheduled out the next two. We have the first two weekends covered with Mitch Mayer on the Parks Department. And then, Jim Callager will be back for the third weekend. But we will have staff, individuals out of water, electric, public works, on-call and on-notice each of those weekends, should we have incidents. I'm planning to be around all three weekends. And we'll be accessible by the three co-chairs, Jerry Plonback, Jerry Valerius, and Mike Schteegish, should they need something from the city. So, we are in direct contact and will be available and around throughout most of the entire term.
Good. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, did Paul Bush talk to you at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked last week. I too will have staff hired as kind of a liaison, that anything in the area there would be dealt with. I did talk to Jerry Novak. He is in charge of the EMS committee for police and, well, police, fire, and ambulance. They are providing their own first aid people, volunteers, that are minimally, generally, first responders, that will be staffed for each game inside the fence. And then, we will just continue to monitor weather. I'll be watching weather alerts through the national weather. And I would pass that information on to Jerry directly. He's planning on being there also. So, that's our plan right now. And then, I will talk to the golf course also. My discussion with, excuse me, Paul, was about utilizing the ballroom in case of a weather emergency. So, I, we ironed that out and he was going to be around each weekend also. And then, I'll talk to the golf course, or golf club too.
Now, Paul had some concerns about parking. Did he mention any of that with you?
He did. I will talk to Glenn tomorrow at our staff meeting about what the plan. They were just going to mark off a few more stalls from like the...
On their side of the street?
Yeah. All the way towards Lexington there. So, it's 15 stalls or something for wedding party. And then, the rest of the guests will be fending for themselves.
Because they do have weddings all three Saturdays.
Yes.
The entire ballpark, swimming pool, parking lot will be fenced so that there will be no vehicular traffic inside of there. The driveway access off Lexington Avenue, we'll be shutting down Lexington Avenue at Third Street Northeast, right?
Third Street, southeast.
Southeast. Southeast.
Southeast, yeah. Just from the parking lot south into the golf course.
So we'll be that emergency access and other needs, then we'll barricade that off. But the pedestrian traffic will come through that primary entrance there, on the western side of the parking lot, in through the ticketing booth to get into the whole entire parking lot, which will then filter into the baseball stadium and all of the food stuff. Most of the food stuff will be out there, plus shirt sales and other trinkets. I'm not sure exactly what, it's allowed to be there, and then they'll have two different locations, but they'll have beer sales at the tournament as well.
Is there, Jim, you know where you shut off Third Street there, is there gonna be a spot where people could drop people off, in like a little U-turn type deal?
I think it'll be setback just enough that, because even buses will come through, they'll allow buses to stop, unload, and then send them on their way for parking.
Okay, because I did talk to Larry the other day, and that was something that I thought that that would be a good idea if someone has elderly people in their car to drop them off there, and rather than have to worry about a golf cart and that type thing.
And the intent is already, as we take a look at the first weekend, you know, hopefully we instituted good planning all the way around, but if we find for some reason that we need to make adjustments, is what we mean after the first weekend, take a look at where we need to modify things for the following two weekends. So we'll do triage and reanalysis to see how well things went the first weekend, and adjust on the fly.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments?
But should any of you receive any calls or anything, you'll direct those to me, and I'll work with the three co-chairs of the tournament, and we will have a list to call all of the staff that's available under the different areas, should we need to get any particular issues.
Third Street is not a private street, is it?
No.
Is that, is that the Tonneau Street, the last, beyond Parkview, that street?
Second.
Is that Second, beyond Parkview?
Second Street, yes.
Is that public?
It's public.
Yeah.
It was half-vacated many years ago, but there's still, I think like fifty feet right over there.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the ballpark use and licensing agreement?
Second.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Mike, next one. Do you want to just kind of elaborate a little bit for Kay, who wasn't here at the last meeting?
At the last meeting, we had a couple of gentlemen up here before the council that are involved in the Rick Tees Memorial Softball Tournament, and they indicated some challenges that they've encountered in the past years about enforcement of all of the liquor rules and regulations as relates to individuals under age twenty-one, that it's been slightly difficult to police fellow peers that are playing at the tournament. Also, there was discussion and recognition that the individual that was applying for the beer permit, as it was being put in his name, that there was no official entity, although we determined that we could probably issue the permit as has historically been done under the charitable contribution, or the charitable entity, that either it was nonprofit, charitable, what were the other two, Jim?
Club religious or charitable.
Club religious, as to who was eligible for a beer permit. And so it was really issued to an individual, because there was no formal charitable organization, but they make a charitable donation to the city, is how we think it historic, it's been done the same way since I've been here for ten years, hasn't really changed. But there was recognition that because there is no insurance, because their gross sales are under twenty-five thousand, they weren't required to have an insurance policy like other liquor vendors, even though it was held on city property. And so there were some concerns along all of those lines, and there was debate about how or what they could do to try to help alleviate that, to make sure that ultimately, the worst case, that something happens, that individual that applied for the beer permit, that he wasn't one on the hook for no reason, because he was doing a nice thing for the community. Chamber indicated a real desire, that they think it's a real integral part of the entire Dojinki weekend, and so we had discussion, and we had actually talked at our staff meeting following the next day about a solution, one of which was to have the Chamber pick it up under the auspices of their one-to-four-day liquor license that they get, and we had no more than come out of our staff meeting. Had to call from the Chamber, wanted to know if they could potentially pick them up. So independent of both of us, we came to that same conclusion, and the more we looked into that with the city attorney's office, and the statutes, and the fact that if it was put under the auspices of the Chamber, that there would be liquor liability insurance in place for the event, bad for it if something happened like that. But it would require a change in the license as far as the dates, because Dojinki is September twenty-one, twenty-two, whereas the softball is twenty-one, two, and three, apparently from that time, or it was twenty-two, twenty-three, so we needed to pick up the range of the three dates. The application indicated is intended to pick up and provide coverage for the softball tournament for the sale of three-two beer. They've got the concession stand down at the park for their beer garden, so to speak. And then the application also would provide liquor liability insurance that will cover their activities. As they resubmitted their application for the entire Dojinki festival, we did talk with the state's alcohol enforcement division, and they were okay with resubmitting the change, because we already have the license for that event already, so we just have to resubmit a new application, the new dates, and we already have the insurance and the locational coverage, and so they said that they would process that. And so all in all, the event goes on really without any noticeable change. The Chamber isn't picking up any, anything other than they have to become involved in the purchase and ensure the beer sales are done legally and legitimately, but the softball teams that contribute, and the beer sales and the food sales, whatever goes into that, still would come then as a donation to the city. The Chamber, I think, has a feeling that they've worked out with them, I don't know precisely what that is, but net of the proceeds that would come back to us, that would go into that Rick Tees Memorial Softball Fund that we're holding on to for the future.
And how much is that now? Do you have any idea?
A hundred and four thousand dollars. Hundred and four, hundred and five, I think, so. It has accumulated over time, and we still account for it separately, as was always done. So they were quite happy to hear that the Chamber met with them earlier last weekend, which Thursday, and went through all of the changes, and they formally submitted revised and amended application to us, to the city, and so the event goes on, as nobody noticed, other than the Chamber will essentially hold that club over the process, that technically the beer sales have to go to them, and they have to account for that, and then they'll work out obviously the donation issuance. But the individuals don't have to be concerned that they're in precarious position, as it was, and has been in the past. The different applicants have changed over the years, and as we got to digging into it and looking at it, there were questions, and number one, no insurance, number two, who was the entity, was it a legal entity that was really making application for that, and so there were some questions, and the Chamber comes in to help and should leave most all of those concerns.
Do you think that partnership's gonna continue in the future?
I don't see why it wouldn't, and I know there was a concern that was expressed in their dialogue, is that the Chamber's not attempting to take over the softball in any respect. They just have to, if they're gonna use their umbrella, their insurance, they're gonna wanna make sure that they are the legal entity that's required to enforce the liquor liability laws, and obviously the biggest issue is consumption of alcohol under age twenty-one, and we're not certain that it's all necessarily coming from the beer garden at the concession stand, there is that in some cases, it may be private product that is brought in during the tournament as well.
Well, the event started very casually following the death of Rick. Ruth and her friends just did it, and they came up with money, and what should we do with it, and let's move to the city. So there was probably never any organized entity dedicated to that.
And the questioning that, and that's probably why it's gone on as long as it has, and until we started taking a look at it, is that should, we couldn't find any entity under the, you know, any part of it that was going on profit, and then there's a concern raised from the individuals that are actually having to apply for that, that, you know, like I said, that from our risk management, we put those hats on, that you don't need some young individual, you know, with an incident or a bad experience occurring because of that with no insurance. You don't need them to personally lose things in life because they're trying to do a good deed. So we were all looking at trying to find a way to provide some cover, and still ensure that the events and the activity, they will have to be involved, and I know there has been past enforcement of those issues. We've worked with PD to try to see if we can't provide a little greater presence. The Chamber will have to take an active role in it, because it's under their license.
Well, good, I'm glad that worked out, because I think if there's something that wouldn't have been worked out, I think it probably would have gone away, because, you know, the two gentlemen, Jake and Adam, were very concerned about the liability and the risks that they were taking, so. Thanks, Mike. Anyone have any other questions or comments? I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the revised liquor permit?
Some more.
Second.
Is that your key?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds, that sounds, okay, well, you know.
Got a motion by Kay Wilcox, seconded by you, David?
Yep.
Second by Dave Bucik. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? We did, remember, we made that amendment to the public hearing date, corrected that from August sixth to August twentieth on the public notice for a quick trip, public hearing on the liquor. Does anyone have any questions specific to any items in the agenda?
I just have a question on the three-two licenses. Can you remind me, you can have any number of them in the city versus the hard, the on-sale?
This is a temporary one-to-four-day liquor.
Oh, I thought it was quick trip.
No, quick trip. She's wondering about, you know, the three-two.
There is no limitations, this is the...
On the three-two.
On the three-two, there's no limitations. What I was gonna point out, just in case if they had a question, is under the Street Department, the purchase of the JD tractor, that was the one, if you recall, from what had been budgeted, Glenn had in there a new John Deere tractor under the Street Department. The cost is a little over a hundred and five thousand, we had budgeted a hundred and twenty-seven, so a little bit left over, and that's replacing the nineteen ninety-seven New Holland bidirectional tractor. We use this mainly for snow removal on Main Street with a snow blower, for blowing snow in the alleys when we get drifting, and then loading snow into trucks when hauling out the colossus. And we use that big tractor. I was trying to ask your question.
I wasn't listening, anyway, it's Mike.
I'm on a tractor for a hundred and three thousand.
I know, I saw that, I was joking. But I do, now that we're on the accounts payable, I do have a couple of questions. You saw the orange, is that what you saw, the circle that I had online?
No.
Oh, okay. I just, just a couple of quick questions. One was for Glenn, and he's not here tonight, but I was just kinda curious, under the Street Department safety signs, we've paid for city striping, I always thought our city staff did some of that work. I was just gonna inquire about it, it was almost two thousand dollars.
There's initial work, if you remember, that goes on with the striping and that, that we have to do following the seal code.
Okay, but our city staff doesn't do, I mean, we have to contract out for that?
It's bid out as part of that whole seal code.
Oh, it is, okay. That answers that. Then my next question was, Jim, the vest for Officer Jensen that we just have, obviously he had four vests, and I questioned that, but he can't bring his vest from, I mean, is that the property of the sheriff's department that he was with?
It would be, and if it was close to the expiration.
Oh, so there's an expiration date?
There's, good for five years.
Oh, I didn't realize that, okay. Because I was thinking, why did he bring that with? And then if he didn't, what is our policy on the officers that left? Didn't we have a couple extra that he could have used, or?
He could, but they're fitted for the person.
Okay, so we get those back if an officer leaves?
Yes.
For?
Yeah, we'll keep them. Actually, a year and a half ago, when an officer left, kept that vest, and the officer previous to Jensen wore that used vest. Well, it was, it was new for the first officer, so we retained that until.
Okay.
So we still have that one.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious, is there two thousand dollars here?
There, oh, go ahead. Yeah, vests are reimbursed by the feds.
Well, they are.
Usually at fifty percent, and then the state does fifty percent.
Oh, nice.
Sometimes that's a little laggy because of fiscal errors, and if they're out of money, then they wait until the next. But yeah, generally, they are reimbursed a hundred percent.
But the challenge with those is that those are almost a personal, individual piece of equipment, that when you wear that in the heat of the summer and the winter, that it's due to hygiene conditions and that, that unless a vest really hasn't been used, and unless it really fits, is that you've got obviously different sizes, and you try to fit that underneath the blue shirts and over the top of a T-shirt in between there, and above the gun belt. You really want those to be formidable fitting for the individual officers, just because of the amount of time that you wear that on the job, you know, no different than your personal belt or other things that go with that. So there's a lot of hygiene involved in that.
That makes sense, too. I was just curious, because they're a thousand dollars, and I was just wondering, he wouldn't bring his over from, you know, or whatever.
I know when our discussion about his equipment, that, his was almost expired.
It was.
So he was gonna need to go in.
And then underneath, it's not a huge one, but just underneath that, the, there's a tank escort charges. Do we, we're not, do we bill for the, for the police escorts out?
Yes.
What would this, that dollar figure be under the payable then? Where it says tank escort charges, I'm just kinda curious why we're paying that, or if it isn't. Hundred and fifty?
Fifty-nine dollars and three cents.
Hundred and fifty-nine oh three?
Um.
It just says tank escort charges.
That was on the US bank card, that was meals and a night stay.
Okay.
But all of that gets invoiced out.
Rebilled back to charge.
Yeah, comes back around.
Okay, that's all in the picture.
But on your expenses, that we all bill off that.
Great, okay, perfect. That was it.
I have one. On page one of the accounts payable, it's under planning, Jeff Belzer's planning vehicle, five thousand, did we buy a new vehicle or a used vehicle?
So what we did was, Jim bought the new police utility vehicle squad, and part of our arrangement was that we're taking a used twenty-fifteen, sport utility vehicle to be the new City Hall vehicle.
Okay.
And that was kind of the payment for that, it works out that way, that we ended up using our capital budget to cut that portion of the check.
Probably could have put that anywhere, you know, other than planning as well, but that's where we had it in the process.
So Bart can drive a new vehicle?
Yeah.
Wow.
New used vehicle.
New used vehicle. This windows will be down, music will play, and your hair will be going around.
We're all looking forward to it.
And just as a clarification, it's missing an S on page three, under the capital projects under the baseball field, and you look at global equipment company for a changing table, that should be changing tables quantity two. That's a baby changing table, both for men's and women's restrooms at the baseball park.
Okay.
I think I did share a letter, or you might have gotten a letter or email from an individual in the community who raised that, we had planned to have what we thought was gonna be taken care of differently, and so it wasn't, so we just had to turn around and find the evidence hall before the tournament starts.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next, miscellaneous. Any opposition? Okay. Next, miscellaneous. Patrick, you got anything? Sir, you.
I do.
You come and state your name and your address?
I am Joel Renke. I live at 501 Second Avenue Northwest. I was here five, six weeks ago. I can't remember. But I had an issue with my fence being hit by the city break, the snow plow machine, and it hasn't been fixed. I have an issue with my neighbor's shed being inside of the right-of-way, which hasn't been moved. I also have an issue with some power that's in my yard, so I can't finish my fence off to keep my neighbor out of it. And then Mr. Mike, I believe his name is, when I was talking with him about putting the new meter thing in my house, it told me it wasn't gonna happen unless those things were fixed first. He told me that he was going to start sending me $50 more bill per month on my utility bill. And he has now done that. So I was wondering, what I need to do to get this stuff rectified? Because I don't have a problem with putting this stuff in my house. I have a problem with it doing this stuff outside my house. That's why he will go in the house. You know what I'm saying? That's just kinda where I draw the line. So I was just wondering if anybody can help me with that, period? Or what do I need to do to get it rectified?
Well, I know that the last time you showed us pictures and that stuff, and I know that Glenn had, you know, mentioned that if the payloader would have hit your fence, it wouldn't have just been the little damage that was on the fence.
Not little damage, sir. It busted and I screwed together. It's got a 40 pipe. It's not little damage. I have a car hit it two weeks ago. I know the car hit it because my, my fence was stretched, but my posts never moved.
Okay.
It was the payloader. I witnessed it.
I think after you had left, too, we were, the discussion went on a little bit. I can't remember all the details, but I asked our public works director, Glenn, if, I'd asked him a few questions. And then, is it not correct that the city did approach you and asked and actually offered to help repair that fence?
No.
If, if you would move it back?
Why would I move my fence inside my yard? If you want, why?
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm just saying, no, there's more than one way to rectify the situation. You could buy the whole damn thing for me, and I'll go away. You know what I mean? Just give me the right price, and I'm gone. Turn it into a park. I don't care. I'm just saying, since I'm mayor, let's fix it or fix it the other way. You know what I'm saying? There's more than one way. But I'm not paying an extra $50 a month on my water bill because we haven't made a decision how I'm supposed to proceed with this. That's more or less the reason I care.
I think what Sean is trying to say, or maybe didn't say, is that the city did propose to you at some time in the past, that they would offer to pay half of the, if I remember right, half of the cost of replacing that fence.
No, it was to move it five more feet in my yard, which gives you more boulevard. The whole point of me putting that fence up was to keep my neighbor to the south of me from driving all the way across my yard. The byproduct was pushing the road over.
We were under the impression, and I'm not saying we're right or wrong, that it was, that the damage was caused by the plow going through the alley with the heavy snow that caused the heaving into the fence. And had they had, had the payloader had a little bit more room, the snow, the force of the snow being plowed would not damage the fence if you would have been willing to set it, set it back five feet, which you were unwilling to do.
Right.
I'm just saying, that's the story that we got, too. And that seemed like a fair, I won't speak to the rest of the council, but for at least me, that seemed like a fair proposition at that time. Because why fix it? And then the next winter, we'd be fixing it every winter because of the heavy snow. It's plowed and it pushes into the fence.
The, the snow isn't the problem.
Okay.
It, it's the payloader driving up against it. It, like I said, it's screwed together pipe. You can't just, it, it doesn't fall apart. It's not, not like a regular chain link fence with all the, what do you call that? EMT pipe or whatever is the kind that pulls over. This is schedule 40 water pipe, galvanized pipe. It is, it, it don't bend unless you whack it with something really heavy. And it's 32 inches off the ground. And it broke my T that I had screwed together. It's, it broke my screw joint.
I really do attempt to sit down. I've not been involved in the actual direct negotiations. I told Mr. Renneke that the challenge is, going back and looking at the original permit that was issued, and that was before the city had changed its, can the.
Setback.
Setback to right-of-way. Before a fence adjacent to the right-of-way is that Mr. Renneke is correct, that he was issued a permit back in 19, no, 2003.
Three or four.
Four, yeah.
So I issued this a long time.
I understand. And the research that I did indicated that a permit was issued to install a fence on the fence line. But the notice that went with that as well is that the city would not be responsible for maintaining that fence or repairing that fence because of the abilities to try to clean that roadway and move any amount of snow. I think Glenn was here at the last meeting. He does not recall, or we do not have the specific incident that, that I have record of, that I can either agree or dispute what Mr. Renneke is saying as far as that a city payloader hit the fence, that I, I can't dispute that with them. And as we had, take a look at trying to offer something, it didn't seem to make sense to try to recreate the situation again, right in the same location, without trying to move it. I can share and understand and empathize with him wanting to have people drive on his property. And so that's understandable. The utility, separate from the discussion with that, relative to his utility bill, that the utility commission, as you recall, has set out to change out meters, water meters, and electric meters throughout the entire city. And in accordance with conversation with the city attorney, even though Mr., is it Renneke?
Yes.
Would like to consolidate these issues all together into one issue, the replacement of the water meter really has nothing to do with the fence, other than as he is describing. That's one issue. Inside versus these others are outside. And so I've not had occasion to sit down and attempt to have a conversation with Mr. Renneke, that they had tried to propose some solution. The additional fee on the utility bill is in accordance with the utility commission adopted policy, in accordance with working with the city attorney's office in an effort, I think this is the last water meter in town that has not been replaced. And we've not been allowed to change it out because he's trying to group all of the issues together, correct?
Right.
And so we're not gonna solve it here tonight. I'd be happy to make myself available to have a follow-up discussion and see if there's any way we can try to find resolution that we won't find it sitting here tonight. I appreciate him coming back and would attempt to try to sit down and have a conversation. But it's got some elements that are difficult to rectify, even if one wants to try to. Even assuming that we took 100% of the responsibility, it really doesn't make a lot of sense to, to put good monies into replacing the fence, knowing that it's likely to get hit and we may be bad dealing with this incident yet. So, so there's where we kinda sit. And so all I can pledge is to offer to, to sit down and try to have a follow-up meeting and to see if we can find ways to attempt to resolve it. But to try to group all of them together and. To one so-called agreement, may or may not be possible, but I'm certainly willing to make myself available for follow-up conversation.
That's fine. But a good date for that conversation, you take off $50 on that bill?
Well, I, I can't do that right now. We have the utility commission, which is a separate body from the council. That's our water and electric board. They have the abilities to make independent policies of the council.
Did I get any ever signed?
No, no, but what I can do is.
Did I get somebody to sign?
If you'll bear with me, and we have a conversation, we might be able to find a way as we attempt to resolve the issues, to take a look at addressing that very question.
Have I been dealing with issues?
I understand. And we may or may not get to a resolution. But I'm willing to try to meet with you and to see if there's a way that we can work towards trying to resolve these issues.
So in the meantime, I suck for $50 bill on that. Is what you're saying?
What we can take a look at is that they have an adopted policy, utilities commission, not the council.
Well.
The council can rectify that. That would have to be done by the new preg utilities commission.
Aren't they in charge of it?
No, that's a separate body.
That's a separate thing.
A separate body, statutorily created, that has certain powers and authorities different than the council.
That's fine. When do they meet?
They meet monthly on the third.
August 27th.
August 27th at 3:30 at the Powers.
Power Plant. At the Power Plant?
Mm-hmm.
There's a conference.
I can get you that address and so.
That would.
But, but they have separate decision meetings from the council as it relates to utility billing for water and electric.
Oh, right. Well, I mean, they got the power in my yard and not in the right-of-way. There's all kinds of things.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm willing to offer to make myself available to try to sit down and have a further conversation with you.
Do you have the powers?
I can move downstairs when we're done here.
Perfect.
Okay. Mitch, you have anything? Jim, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, Ken?
Just a quick reminder, primary election next Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the St. Wentz Parish Activity Center. I want to remember, or remind everybody to go up and vote. And maybe a good time to register to vote if you haven't done that already, if you wanna vote in primary. So it's usually a quiet day, but kinda gets our feet wet. And Barb is helping new this year, so she'll get to see how that goes.
She gets a ringtone?
She did.
No, 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 that's still mine. Only my question.
Oh, yeah.
So that's all I got.
Okay, Mike?
Just a couple of items. One, Ken mentioned the primary elections next Tuesday before the scheme. That's also the closing for the filing for city elective offices. As of today, one weekend, we have one individual has filed for the city council, and Mr. Nicolai refiled for mayor today. So we have those two that have filed. And at this point, we still have one other council vacancy under the regular election for four-year term. And then under the special election, we have the slightly over two-plus years of the term left originally from Janet Tumas' term that Maggie had been filling since about a year ago. And as soon as we're done with the election on November 6th, and the council ratifies the election results, then somebody can be sworn into that office right away. And so we have the remaining 2018 as well as all 2019 and 2020, as far as the office. Second thing I have is we got notice that, I don't know that we've talked to you, but it appears that Mindot is gonna be moving ahead with a project in issue on Highway 21. It will be a Vitumis Mill and Overlay project that will begin about one mile south of the intersection of County Cassaw 37, nearby Chart, just a tenth of miles south of that intersection, and go north all the way to Jordan, doing a mill and overlay, turn lanes, ADA improvements and drainage. I don't know when exactly it's going to begin, but we just have noticed that there is a meeting that we've got from the city's perspective. Mindot is hosting. And we've obviously got utilities and some other things that come into play there. But just kinda letting you know that that's gonna happen next year. We're still working with Scott County, trying to get verification of whether they'll consent and release to us to do the design and essentially the complete Mill and Overlay of County Road 37 next year as well. We're still waiting right now for the railroad to come in and replace the concrete panels. We thought it was either gonna be the end of July or sometime in August. We're not expecting much in the way of very adequate notice. There's no required notice that they can come in. They're working with Mindot, so at least we'll have some notice. So there may be some temporary detours set up, wondering if they can even replace those concrete panels, all in the hopes of trying to have all of these things out of the way before 2020 project ends. That's all I have.
Is it publicly, who filed?
Yes, the filings of Maggie Bass and Chuck Nicolai. Maggie filed for one of the four-year seats, and the mayor refiled for the two-year mayor hold term. So like I said, there's one four-year term, there's still any number that can file for any of those, but it's the mayor, two regular, four-year council seats, and then the special remain council vacancy for the two-plus term. So Patrick, that's another thing for you. You can pass it on to Chuck, because I know you were gonna wanna put something in the newspaper, that filings close at 5 o'clock next Tuesday, the 14th, same day of the.
Okay. Barb, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Sean?
Nope.
David?
I've got three items. Mitch, any luck on resolving the TV reception? Not yet?
Nope. It's old equipment. I don't know that there's anything we can. I've talked to three or four of the people. They all, it's been here since I've got here, so.
Is that the issue?
Yeah. The issue is that we've had a couple of complaints came about, they can't hear what's being said at these meetings.
Is that on television?
Yes.
Now, then, why?
No, they're online on the side.
Yeah, they're online.
Who gives a non-tellevision?
That's.
Is it Bevcom?
Yes.
That's just YouTube channel.
Yeah. Mike, senior housing, you talked about having Scott County come and talk to us. Anything on that issue?
Yeah, I got a return phone call last week, and we're trying to find some dates for the DVA council.
Okay, good.
Just on the school channel, you show?
Senior housing as it relates to what?
There's been some requests by people for the city to come up with some senior housing, people 55 and older, like we did, like the square, sort of want. We wanted to know if there's any possibility of doing another one of those, and how do we go about doing it?
With the CDA.
Yeah. And last one for Ken, QuickTrip fence issue, anything on that?
Notified the Hanses that the fence would have to go up to adjacent property owners to the Hanses. Definitely would fight the fence being any lower than ordinance required. I talked to one of the site managers from QuickTrip. They indicated that they would not then be applying for variance just due to the majority opinion of not wanting to lower that, even though the Hanses did want it lowered. But we had already approved it at the ordinance required height. Anything would have been a variance, it would have to apply for after the fact. So I did let them know. I've not heard anything back at this point. But the, the two other property owners on Fifth Avenue West Side of QuickTrip were, were very upset that we would even consider lowering the fence against the ordinance. So just a differing opinion on, on that. They were both at, at the hearings we had and never said anything in support of it, but felt they didn't have to because it protected their interests for noise and, and the visual impact, which they don't wanna look at it.
Okay.
I don't know how the Hanses will feel about that, but I did let them.
Well, I can understand why they're requesting it. The husband is, got cancer, limited time.
Yep.
And that's all he has to look at.
Yep.
So I don't know where it's going either. That's it.
Okay. Kate, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Maggie?
No, don't.
Okay, the only thing, in the packet, Jim, we have something with the area foundation walk.
Oh, yes.
Do we need to do anything on that?
No.
It was in the consent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The same with the inference remembered in silence, is that something?
That was informational that came, I think you.
I, I haven't done it in the past, but I can do the proclamation.
I would say we could do it through my way of proclamation.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanted to. That just came as an informational item.
Yeah, I know I've done some, not exactly for this one, but, so maybe Barb, if you could be so kind to put it on that proclamation form?
Sure.
It's due for October, but.
Okay.
And then, Ken, I assume you saw the letter from James Fretton?
Yeah.
And that's being addressed with her. I, I assume, reading her letter made it sound like the width of the.
like the width of the streets and, you know...
That's a topic we've talked about with the committee of the Chicago 19 project, and I don't think we disagree necessarily, but we're limited in what Mindot will...
Right.
...flexibly work within the right-of-way that we've got to deal with.
Okay.
Ken and I talked today, that we'll take that to our next project meeting next week and try to provide a response to her.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, we won't leave it open, to explain what Mindot's perspective is, and if you recall what we reported after the public hearings, and what we've done so far, is that we would like to have allowed the actual pavement surface to, I think there's a difference of about three feet on each side for a total of six feet, where the state is wanting to narrow up the pavement surface and end up obviously with wider sidewalks, that our preference would be to hold it close to what we have. And we've been back and forth, both Kate and Maggie have been on the task force advisors we've worked with at Mindot. As you've heard, we've gone through, and we've tried to hold that as much as we can. The feel as we've talked is that if you take a look at the width of the pavement and the parking down around the Brujic Funeral Home, when you have a large number of attendees that are going to the funeral home, that's going to be the essential feel and width of the highway downtown. Now, you're also looking at two mini roundabouts at Columbus and First Street, First Avenue. And so as you take a look at the trucks coming through and other vehicles coming down, we're expecting that to slow down vehicles coming in from the east heading west. The bop-outs will be modified, but are still retained for pedestrian abilities to step out close to the pavement, but also still be able to see and be protected versus trying to step back with a squared up curb and gutter line. So it's intended, by design, to also to help in developing slower mechanisms for vehicle traveling through the downtown. So, we've had significant interaction and debate on that. We haven't had success at keeping it at the way that we would have liked to have been originally, but we also have been successful, Mindot wanted to take it narrower than what they've agreed to, and so, we're both right now with the ultimate design at levels that probably neither one of us are totally enamored with, but we think is workable. Ultimately, in the end, the council will have, when it gets to final design, the final layout, all of the cost estimates, then the council gets to put their stamp on the project that says finally yay or nay on moving ahead with the State Highway Project or not. If you say no, then we sit in the same position as it would exist now, and the project likely wouldn't move forward in that respect, and so, we want to be very careful of playing that card at the end, that that's ultimately your final control card, so to speak, in light of what you're seeing and what we're interacting with Mindot in that overall look at design that we've gone through and kind of reported to you in the past.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we respond to her once you guys, after a meeting, if you just send her a note.
I do agree with her though, if you think about the traffic, how it pinches when you get up to Brujic, and if you have that through the whole corridor.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mindot wanted to take it even narrower than that, and we tried to talk about the concern of, well, as you see, you've got some free play, if you get out of your car right now to where the edge of that white fog line is, you've got a little bit of elbow room to get out of your car and feel a little bit safer than you do back down towards that area by the funeral home, and, you know, that's where Mindot would like to take it even narrower, and, you know, we've flagged the cottage to be doing that, but at the same time, their conversation is, is that they don't want it to be as large as we do, so, we're trying to work in that process, and like I said, you ultimately have one card to play, and that's the final project agreement where you have a formal stamp of approval or disapproval. Hopefully, we've been upfront and talking about that sufficiently, and if you understand where that's at and what those widths and alternatives are, if you remember when we went through all of that following each of the two public hearings and the public improvement project, for the 429 project, that, you know, we've been through some of that, and so there's a challenge for both parties to have exactly what they would each like to provide out there.
I think it'd be nice for that gal, what do you mean, that leads that whole group, that focus group?
Nikki Farrington.
Nikki, if she'd bring back the visual of that, again, I don't know how much power that advisory committee has, but there were quite a few people that still thought it was too narrow, would they reconsider? She'd bring back the visual of people actually trying to open the door and get out, I mean, especially at the library. A lot of kids jumping out there.
Which was also why originally we, in consultation with Mindot, were discussing about whether we went to the back and parking.
Right, that was terrible.
Well, it seemingly, from what we're hearing over in St. James, has become quite popular that they have a park across from, in their downtown area, where they've got commercial across there, and that as you take a look at the fact that if you try to find a parking lot downtown sometimes, you're actually barking it, backing into a parking stall, and so you're doing the very same act that you would be parking at a diagonal, but the diagonal gives you that more safer feeling of being in between cars and opening those car doors, where you're not opening it directly out into the drive portion of that lane. The early feedback we got wasn't popular, and we threw that out in consultation just to see what people's views would be. In doing that, that would essentially take away any on-street parking across the roadway to the north side, which wasn't favorably in the desire suburbs as well, but that was quite frankly when we were looking at that option, trying to address that down that neighborhood. But should bring that up, we did have a pop-up tent at the checkout in Prague event in the park, and I had the two engineers here, Nikki Farrington, the project engineer, Chris Cavendish, the engineer, myself, and we were busy for those three entire hours of the event, answering questions, showing people what's happening, and interacting with the dialogue on the highway project, so, a lot better than the rainy event we had last year, and so, we had a lot of good dialogue. And then both Kate and Maggie were at Monday night of last week, were at an event that Mark Applebaum and his staff from the Senior Housing Project put on an informational meeting for individuals that either have expressed interest in renting, or that had interest in finding out more information about the project. And so, he pretty well filled the basement of First Bank and Trust Building that evening. He talked, and Shelley from...
Augustin.
Augustin was there and answered questions, the contractor was there, the architect was there, so they were trying to answer questions, and it was an event that started at, what was it, 5:00, and I don't think that done till quarter to 7, 10 to 7, so, a lot of information, and it appears like some good interest.
Okay, good. Well, unless there's anything else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Ruchek. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, we're out of here, thank you everyone.